Good afternoon. I'm Steve Smith, Chairman of our Board of Trustees and like to welcome everyone here and call this meeting to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. General, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In keeping with the Pledge of Allegiance and bragging on the fact we've got the best Veterans Program in the country, a tradition that we established that I'm proud of, I know everybody is, is recognition of a student veteran. Take it away, General.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege to present Petty Officer Third Class Mercy Keegan. Born and raised in Kenya until the age of 20, eldest of seven siblings, in 2009 was awarded an academic and athletic scholarship to attend Norfolk State University. In 2013 enlisted in the United States Navy and faithfully served for five years during which time she earned her U.S. citizenship. Her skill set, which could have been predetermined by the name of Mercy, her skill set is as a hospital corpsman, a trauma corpsman with a specialty in dentistry. During her five years of faithful service, she placed herself in harm's way in Somalia and Afghanistan. And because of her language capabilities and her cultural comprehension, she entered a very elite program, which during my two years in Afghanistan, we had just begun to mature. It was called the Female Engagement Support Team. And I can remember briefing Afghan President Karzai as he complained that our SEALs and Army Green Berets and Army Rangers were invading Afghan homes at night. I remember describing to the President of Afghanistan the reason for that. While it placed our special operations forces at greater risk because of the complexity of doing anything at night, it allowed us to track and monitor evil people to where they would bed down for the night. It dramatically reduced collateral damage as we would attempt to capture or if necessary kill these evil people because during the daylight why they would hide and run amongst innocent women and children. The female members of these elite raiding teams then entered the home and in the native language were able to separate the women and children from the male-aged individuals who some of them were suspected to be the enemy. Because I'm sure we had instances where they were not the enemy, but they responded in an aggressive fashion to people entering their home at night uninvited. So she did that in Somalia and Afghanistan. She is now a senior here at MTSU with her major in Biology/Chemistry and she is completing her Dentistry Studies in Nashville. Ladies and gentlemen, Petty Officer Mercy Keegan.
The Chairman of Board of Trustees, the President of MTSU, Dr. McPhee, Lieutenant General Huber, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here today. It's been my greatest honor to serve the United States of America and I'm very privileged to be here today. I can't thank you enough for giving me this opportunity to be here and it's been a privilege to serve the men and women who've sacrificed their lives to protect this country. I can't put into words the experience I've had in those five years as it was a very unique experience, especially for a female, as described by Lieutenant General Huber. That's all I have for today. It's a big thank you.
Thank you, General. If that doesn't take your breath, then you're not American. That's neat. I don't have any welcoming remarks except thank the people that go the time and effort to put all this on. We had a great lunch and this is a big effort. I'm appreciative of being your Chairman. Ms. President, do you?
My remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, we have the special honor, our Board does, to recognize the Blue Raider Football Team Academic Achievement. Of all the wins in athletics that I've witnessed, I don't think any of them are equal to this achievement. We have people that make a living playing professional athletics, but very few. But our job's to turn out somebody that can be a good citizen and make a living and this is one score that we can measure. I'll read the script and then add. The NCAA declared recently that MTSU's graduation success rate was the best, number one in the nation among public universities. Say that one more time. The number one university in the United States that plays Division One football in graduation rate. We were number one in the United States in graduation rate. It's something that Darrell worries about and I'm worried about. Among all big schools, we were tied for third with Vanderbilt. Memphis and Tennessee were a paltry 82 and 74. We were 95. Northwestern, Duke, Vanderbilt, MTSU, that's the group we want to be in. That's the group one, Utah ran it out the top five. Six straight year, we've either equaled or set a new school record. Graduation success rate is a four-year measure of freshmen and athletic transfers who entered MTSU between 2009 and '12. This marks the seventh year in a row we've been above 80. And that, it's not by accident. We didn't sign somebody that matured and grew four inches and now we've got a great basketball team. This takes diligent, everyday work. Now, I'm hoping we're going to be able to learn some lessons to transfer to our general population where we can get our graduation rate better and better and better and better. So at this, at this time, Chris, I'd like for you to, to stand and introduce any athletic staff are here and give us pertinent remarks as to how we did this. Please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And like any successful endeavor, it's university-wide effort and it's just not an athletics deal. So it really started with Dr. McPhee in like 2005 and the APR was in, in bad shape and he put more resources into it at the time into the Student Affairs and Dr. Glenn Shop. And then Dr. Sales leads up our, our Academic Council and so that they've all been a major, major piece of this puzzle. You don't have those kind of scores without everybody rowing the boat in the same direction. But I do have two people that work very hard on this. Our, our football staff is out recruiting, so we'd like to have Coach Stock here because head coaches are critical to this, but these two are as critical as anybody. So Todd Wyatt, if you would stand. Todd is the Director of our Academic Enrichment Center. His boss is Dr. Sales. Works very closely with our, our football program, done a great job and, and so he makes sure they're going to class on time, that, that they have the proper tutors that they need and, and encouragement to graduate. So Todd, thank you for what you do. And then if we could get Coach Brent Brock to stand. Brent's our Director of Football Operations, does a terrific job. He's on our athletic side of the house. He's the one providing gentle encouragement and maybe some more persuasive encouragement to make sure they go to class and understand the importance of a college degree. So Brent works side by side with Coach Stock. This is one of Brent's primary areas and just does a terrific job. Both those guys love our student athletes, always have their best interests at hearts and will always do the right things for the student athletes. So they're a great pair. So thank you Brent for what you do. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got, but those are the two superstars that scored those touchdowns to get that graduation success rate where it is.
Great job.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a brief remark. As Chris said, it, it really takes a team effort to reach to this point. It's been really my pleasure to see the sustained excellence. Some of you will recall that our football team was last, dead last in, in 2005 under APR. And I was on the Board of Directors for the NCA and actually was part of the team that put those graduation success rates together. And certainly the call for attention resulted in what we are seeing today. I want to add that it's not just the football team, that we have 17 or 18 Division One sports. Chris, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And just what all of our sports are exceeding in the area of academic success. From our tennis team having a perfect track and field. So this is, is a reflection overall on all of our student athletes and we certainly are very pleased that we have received national recognition from the President of the NCA, Mark Emret, with regards to the overall performance of athletes at our university. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank, thank you. Do you have, it's time on the agenda for you to have opening comments?
No, I'm, I'm, thank you.
Madam Secretary, will you call?
Yes, sir. Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Boyd.
Present.
Trustee Delay.
Here.
Trustee Eisenberg.
Here.
Trustee Freeman.
Here.
Trustee Jacobs.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Wright.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now it's time to approve our minutes from the September 18 Regular Session Board Meeting. Has everybody reviewed those or are there any exceptions, deletions, additions?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Motion's been made and segmented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion passes, Mr. Chairman?
Unanimously, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And now's the time for our committee reports. Pam, Academic Affairs, Student Life and Athletics Committee, it's yours.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Smith. The Academic Affairs, Student Life and Athletics Committee met on November 12, 2019. The first action item before the committee was approval of the minutes from the Academic Affairs, Student Life and Athletics Committee meeting on September 4, 2019. The next agenda item to be considered was approval of tenure and promotion of faculty member Dr. Keller, Kelly Kohler, who applied for tenure and promotion to Associate Professor and has been reviewed by her Department Chair, Department Committee, College Committee, and College Dean according to MTSU Policies 204 and 205 and the respective college and department policies. The President recommends the faculty member be granted tenure and promoted to Associate Professor retroactive to August 1, 2019. And a new policy, Policy 90, Athletics Integrity and Conduct of Athletic Staff, was presented to the committee for consideration. This policy applies to all athletic staff, including coaches and administrators, and sets out expectations for their conduct regarding student athletes. The policy also provides an additional independent objective process of reviewing student athlete complaints and grievances through which student athletes may report behavior inconsistent with the expectations set forth in Policy 90. Athletic staff found to have violated this policy will be subject to disciplinary procedures as outlined in the policy. So all of the mentioned action items thus far were approved by this committee. Then consideration of revisions, Rule 0240-07-05, Student Conduct and Policy 540, Student Conduct, were not approved and those items will be revisited at the next committee meeting in March of next year. So as last before the group, two professors introduced the committee to Open Educational Resources, OER, a new movement to save students money and improve retention by providing free educational materials. They highlighted the effort to bring OER to MTSU. And finally, I'd like to thank Trustee Pete Delay for chairing the meeting on November 12 in my absence, so thank you, Pete. So, Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining these actions are available in your notebooks, were made available prior to the meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the actions of the committee? Motion's been made?
Second.
Segmented. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Madam Secretary?
Thank you.
Next is Audit Committee. Trustee Kaboak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Audit and Compliance Committee met on November 12, 2019, and the first item for consideration before the committee was approval of the minutes from the August 20, 2019 meeting. Next, Assistant Vice President Janey Stevens presented proposed revisions to Policy 10, Ethics and Code of Conduct, to add investigatory procedures and an appeals process for all ethics investigations. Following was an informational item, results of external reviews, by Ms. Brenda Burkhardt, the Chief Audit Executive. First, the Office of the Comptroller of the Treasury released a report concerning an investigation of selected records of the Athletic Department on August 29, 2019. The results of the investigation concluded an Associate Athletic Director used his university purchasing card to make a questionable purchase and department staff used university purchase credit from a sports fitness company to provide shoes and sports apparel to family and friends. The report also included an internal control deficiency of inadequate oversight of use of sponsorship trade. The report concluded that management of the Athletic Department indicated they were establishing new practices and procedures to correct the findings and the internal control deficiency disclosed in the report. And the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Programs Fiscal Unit, conducted a financial desk review on October 17, 2019 of the stop services, training, officers, prosecutions, funding for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. The current maximum funding is $60,000. The financial monitoring review objectives were, one, to assess the reliability of internal controls; two, test the reliability of the financial reporting; three, to test if costs and services are allowable and eligible; and four, to verify contractual compliance. There were no findings of non-compliance. Next, MTSU Policy 70, Internal Audit Section 10-point-F requires, I'm sorry, 9-point-F, requires significant results of internal audit reports to be presented to the Audit and Compliance Committee quarterly. Ms. Burkhardt reported that since the last meeting of the Audit and Compliance Committee, the following two audit projects have been completed. First, cash counts at June 30, 2019 with no reportable issues. And then two, audit of inventories for fiscal year ended June 30, 2019 concluded the year-end inventory counts were accurate and in compliance with the inventory procedures. Due to errors in the valuation of the Printing Services inventory, the report included a recommendation for Printing Services to include valuation instructions in the inventory procedures. The current status of the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2020 was included in the materials for the committee's review. The public meeting of the committee adjourned and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and investigations. Mr. Chairman and trustees, I'm pleased to report that all action items before this committee were approved unanimously and the materials outlining these actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Kaboak. I'd like to have a motion to approve the items of the Audit and Compliance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and segmented. Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously, Madam Chairman. Trustee Jacobs is unavailable to be here today and Mary Martin, Trustee Martin's going to take over.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on November 12, 2019. The first action before the committee was approval of the minutes from the September 4, 2019 meeting. Next, Policy 808, Compensation Reporting and Approvals requires the Board of Trustees to approve salary increases of MTSU employees. Kathy Muselman, Assistant Vice President for Human Resources, presented the request for approval to implement market adjustments using the remainder of the 2% salary pool and an additional allocation of $1 million from operating funds. The market adjustments will be based on 2014-15 CUPA data and will be effective January 1, 2020 for employees on payroll as of December 31, 2019. With the allocated resources, employees whose current salary is below the market predicted salary will receive 43% of the recommended adjustment. The last action item before the committee was the recommendation for approval of the 2019-2020 October Revised Budget. Changes to the original July budget were outlined by Vice President Alan Thomas. The committee approved both the proposal to implement market adjustments and the October budget. The remaining informational items on the agenda will be presented at a later date. All action items before the committee were approved unanimously and materials outlining these actions were made available for review prior to this meeting and are included in the board notebooks. This concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion's been made and segmented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, Madam, unanimously. Audit and Compliance Committee must be approved by the Board. Listed below are the names submitted, I submitted, and no one is to be left off that wants to be on there, so, but it'd be good and Heidi won't kill me if we go ahead and get those names on there now. So JB, I assume you wanted to pass on that? Okay. You want to pass?
Do I want to pass?
Well, if you want to be on there, I want you on there. That's the part, I want everybody on there that wants to be on there. So after reviewing the list, all in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That list?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we need a motion and a second and then discussion.
Okay. It's moved.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we need, ask for a report from Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very short report, as you'll see on page 73 of your materials. There's just one minor revision to Policy 100 where we have updated references within that policy based on the deletion of Policy 662, which was actually sort of absorbed into Policy 661.
No action is required?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. President? Your report, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the Board. I want you to know I always appreciate the opportunity to provide this updated report to you during our quarterly meetings. First, I'd like to inform you that the Bachelor's of Science degree with a major in data sciences, as you know, was regularly approved during our meeting in September and the new academic programs proposal to establish the degree was also approved by that respective committee. Following the meeting, in accordance with Section 1-011A of TEC Policy, A1-0, a request to the Tennessee High Education Commission was made to consider the proposed academic programs be placed on the commission's agenda at the earliest possible scheduled meeting. I am pleased to inform you that TEC, at its most recent meeting, approved the Bachelor's of Science degree with a major in data sciences and this degree will be offered this fall. This is a very important degree program and I really appreciate the Board approving it. It is one of the areas that is great, in great need and demand by the state, particularly with all the businesses such as Amazon and others coming to the state. So this will be meeting a major economic development and workforce need for this area. Next, Budget Herrings for 2020-2021. The Governor Annual Budget Herring was held on November 5 at the State Capitol where I represent our university and that was for the 2020-21 budget proposal and it was presented to the Governor. On November 18, a similar presentation was made to the House Finance, Ways and Means Committee. I will tell you that in both presentations and both herrings, there were no issues concerning the university and our proposal and in fact, a number of observations were made with regards to the university, particularly as it relates to addressing the state's need with our Capitol, with the academic program, and in particular, our Veterans Program were very much highlighted. I have reserved the majority of my time today, Mr. Chairman, and members of this Board to have a special presentation. Several of you, I think Trustee Baker and others have asked about an update on our partner relationship with corporate and companies in this area. And so I've asked Joe Bales and Paula Mansfield to make that presentation for members of the Board. So, Mr. Bales?
Thank you, Dr. McPhee, members of the Board, Chairman Smith. Paul and I are pleased today to give you a bit of an update on what we're doing in corporate engagement. This is something that for this campus is still relatively new. Paul has been with us about three years now and we feel like we're moving in the right direction because we're drawing a tremendous amount of interest from our corporate neighbors. But to give you just a sense of how we got there, I think it's important to understand a little bit about the environment that existed for many years between higher education and our corporate sector. If you looked at the relationships that used to go on between business and colleges and universities, they were very isolated. They were often one-on-one relationships, often driven by a faculty member, by a research group, by a specific activity, with not a lot of formality to them. There wasn't a lot of breadth. There wasn't a lot of breadth to them, there wasn't certainly an understanding of the synergy that could be captured in a university corporate relationship. Career placement office, in many cases, was a build-it-and-they-will-come model. They opened up, opened their doors, and said, "Come hire our students," without strategically looking at how we could best position the university to have students employed. And resource generation, whether that be sponsorships, advertising, philanthropy, they became very important as we got into the 90s for almost every institution, and they started looking to the corporate sector for assistance. In the early 90s, corporate engagement became something of a professional discipline in higher education. You saw particularly at the Big Ten, the private institutions, the larger research schools, they began to develop offices with dedicated staff, really trying to foster, cultivate and foster relationships with businesses. A lot of times, because of the nature of the job, because they were considered engagement and relationship jobs, they were either in a foundation office or in a research office. But by the mid 90s, we began to see American corporations move away from what could be considered the benevolent neighbor, where they gave a little bit of money, a little bit of engagement with a lot of people, without real regard for how that connected to their particular company. We began to see things like target schools and key school phrases pop open. I see Trustee Krbowiak, her company was one that did that, initiated that, where they began, companies began to selectively pick universities to build strategic alliances based off mutual needs. Starting out, DuPont, IBM, General Motors, Exxon, a few more of the Fortune 500s realized in the late 90s that something needed to be done to better engage the university community. Corporations understood it, the American Business Roundtable really got behind it and said, "We have got to begin a dialogue with our universities so that they understand what we as a business need, and they can begin to work better with us to fulfill our needs." They began a series of biannual conferences that really laid the blueprint for what we now see widely adopted across higher education as a corporate relations model. The thing that became most important in that is that both sides understood what each other needed. And for the business community, not surprisingly, first and foremost, human capital was their number one priority. They needed higher education graduates to fulfill positions within their company. Research was important. Continuing ed and employee development was third on the list in the late 90s. Today, I would argue, it's second. We see more and more companies coming to us needing continuing education, certificate programs, degree completion for their employees. Those were the big three: intellectual capital, exchange of intellectual property, experiential education. All of those were important factors, but the one other thing that came out was companies wanted a cleaner line of communication with universities. And that kind of goes back to the way they originated. When they were one-on-one relationships, it was often with a faculty member, maybe a department chair or a dean, but that person only knew that direct relationship. And so it was very difficult to move beyond that. They couldn't connect them to other places in university, and companies began to really demand that a cleaner line of communication be developed. Universities' needs were very much in line. We wanted job placements. Obviously, if you're graduating students, we want a vibrant job market for them so that there are active, there's active cultivation and recruitment of them. Research support was essential. As federal dollars began to dry up, corporate research became more and more important in fulfilling universities' mission of discovery. Experiential education, because we all know that students learn better when they can apply their learning during that process, and we needed places to position them so they could gain that education. Philanthropic support was important, and perhaps one that was not quite as tangible, but we began in higher education to hear, "You've got to have real-world experience." We got that from those partnerships. So the companies wanted to begin by building stronger relationships with a much smaller group of institutions, matching their strengths and eliminating duplication for them. Higher education, however, as often is the case, we often say, "Higher education is like turning a battleship." It was a little slow to respond. They were not quick to embrace these because they realized it was a win-or-loss situation for many of them. If you were a partner institution, you got great benefit. If you lost that relationship, then there wasn't any resources flowing through you. On our campus, prior to Paula arrival, and actually prior about the mid 2000s, we had a very limited structured corporate environment. It was mostly based out of career services and Dr. Sell's office. They recruited and attracted companies to come, attract students, but very little else went on. We had some isolated programs like concrete industry management that had done a great engagement, a few projects done on one-offs from faculty and departments, but not much else. In 2010, after we came out of the recession, Dr. McPhee initiated the Positioning the University for the Future Initiative. One of the key things that was identified was we had to find a way to have better engagement with our private, with our private sector partners. Due to a lack of funding, it was at that point in time, we were not able to initiate that. It took us about five years before money was made available that we could start that program. So 2000, in fiscal year 16, we hired Paula here as our Director of Strategic Partnerships, and we began to implement the plan as I laid out, done for higher education across the country. As you can see, what we really, our plan is built fairly simply on a four-stage model. We worked with faculty and administration to find those private entities that are a good match for the university. We can't service everyone, so we want to find those companies, those businesses, where their needs, their skills, their expertise are in line with what we're doing on our campus. We worked then with our chambers of commerce. We've been very active with Rutherford, Williams, and Davidson in corporate recruitment as we bring new businesses to the mid-state region so that they see that the university is positioned as the premier supplier of degreed graduates in the mid-state area. We evaluate those relationships for what might be considered best fit. Again, we want to find the synergy so that both parties benefit. It can't be a one-way relationship. It's got to be something that both sides gain value in and that they build off of. And we provide a coordination point for each of those companies so they can facilitate that communication. One of the things we ask in return is that they put someone on their staff so that we can have that one-on-one. It's not a control mechanism as much as it is a coordination point so that both sides can understand what the other's doing. One thing I want to make clear, this is not a fundraising activity. A lot of times, that gets confused. Companies think the minute we come in the door that we're automatically asking for money, and that's not the case. We do look at it, however, as a resource exchange, as we swap things that are of value to both sides. We try and maintain a balance in our programming on those things that have a broad campus-wide perspective, as well as those that fit for departments or colleges, because you've got to have a little bit of both. We can't be everything to everyone, and we do have niches where we are very effective in working in those targeted relationships. And while we will support those one-on-one relationships, or those one-way relationships, and by one-way, I mean, that's a company that only wants to recruit, or that only wants to do a research project. They don't want all the other bells and whistles. We want to support those because that's still a large part of our portfolio, but our focus is going to be on a very limited number of strategic partners that bring maximum value to the university. With that in mind, we've already worked together and got relationships of varying size and complexity with over 70 companies in the last three years. There's a very quick list, and you can see, we kind of cover the waterfront in Nashville's economy. Everything from, we were at the table in bringing Alliance Bernstein to the mid-state region, to Warner Music. We cover, we cover all of our disciplines with relationships that I think give us the opportunity to enhance the university and position ourselves as the lead employer. Now, to walk you through exactly how that might work, I've asked Paula to kind of do a case study for you with Assurion, which is a company that we started working with most recently, that I think gives you an idea of how this, how this goes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I might interject, just before Ms. Manfield's come and make a presentation, an addendum. Joe is right, this is not a fundraising initiative. However, it is a long-term and short-term goal that exposure to our university, support from these companies, will lead to financial support of the mission, the objectives, and the goals of this university. That's one of the areas that we really need to be pushing when we look at other major universities. A lot of these companies have our students as the employees, they get the benefit, and we really are not seeing some financial. So it's not a condition, but I want you to know, members of the Board, that that is part of our strategy. Thank you. Paula?
Thank you. It's such a pleasure to be here today, and in this case study today, we chose in conversation Assurion to talk about for several reasons. They are a privately-held company headquartered in Nashville, which checks one of our boxes because we do, with corporate relationships, need access to the decision-makers. This particular company not only has an expansion plan in place, they're in current construction of their headquarters, so that's important to us to understand that they are a vital company in the Middle Tennessee footprint, and they are moving forward with their growth strategy. So they have committed, this particular company, to hire over 500 new positions within, excuse me, 400 new positions within the next five years. Again, a critical point for us as we look forward to checking the boxes of what makes a good match for this university. They recognize our strengths and are very interested in specific areas. Data science is one. Thank you for, for your effort in recognizing that. Assurion was one of the very first companies that asked about this program, and we have been in numerous conversations with them, putting plans in place for, to be able, for those students to have opportunities. They are highly interested, and we've met with their head, Chief Data Science Leader. They have a national and global presence, they have over 19,000 employees globally in 43 countries. Again, another opportunity for us to continue to partner with them in ways that make sense for us. And one that I really like to tout is their current workforce has over 370 MTSU alumni currently working on their different, four different campuses in the Middle Tennessee area, and leadership positions. They have, in our conversations, when we first began meeting with them, did not have a dedicated professional that was their university relations person, and realized quickly that this was a recipe for success. So they hired a person for that role, and I work with that person on a very regular basis, and they want a relationship with us. They were seeking relationships, did not exactly know how to go about it, but it's been great to work with them in this way. Different engagement activities take place on a regular basis. I meet with our key employers twice a year and do a planning session with them based on what their strategic goals are. We talk about talent acquisition strategies, we talk about specific areas where they are looking ahead in their talent pipeline needs, to identify what those look like and align those with areas that make sense for us. Data science being one, IT, supply chain, all those are very important areas that they are seeking talent in the future, so we talk about that. And then, so their engagement strategies are based on these planning sessions. I aggregate all the engagement activities for them and meet with them to try to determine where it makes sense, and where they want to right-size their assets, and from a talent perspective, from a resource perspective, and certainly from a support perspective. Many conversations evolve, and to President McPhee's point, coming out of a financial services background where revenue is always the number one topic of conversation, I am always looking for new revenue sources, and Assurion would be a great example of that as well, as they have seen value in MT Hack and have chosen to support that. They've seen value in an IT workforce study, they have chosen to support that. Interestingly, they declined at the first year, and then they came back and said, "No, we definitely want to be on board." So just since they have hired a dedicated person to work with this university, then we have created new revenue streams that exceed $25,000 in the last 12 to 18 months. Again, as a case study, this is very important because it checks that box of potential revenue. The other activities you can see are vast and broad and wide. It involves the supply chain concentration, visiting their, what they call the TLC, which is in Smyrna, where they come here, they do events here, we work with them. And again, everything is very orchestrated, it's very focused, and it's very strategic based on what their goals are and what our opportunities are as it relates to professionals within the academic campus. The results and benefits are one of the areas that I am challenged to continue to always evaluate, and most recently was in a conversation with the Provost Office and recognized that there definitely needs to be a tie back to the Carnegie certification. So the mutual benefit exchange of knowledge and resources and the reciprocity of these resources is a critical component and a linchpin of what these relationships will look like going forward, like Assurion. The, for them, for Assurion, they have, we have fueled their growth. When I began working with them in 2016, they had 370 MTSU alumni, and now that number has grown to 373. That has been a variety, we, this is a data point that I continue to look at, and anecdotally look at not just with Assurion, but with other of our main corporate partners because we want to see that number continue to move forward. The, for them, Assurion, in this particular example, the opportunity for internships has grown exponentially. They had 43 students, what, they had over 70 students apply for an internship. Forty-three of our students received the phone call for interviews, and five made it to the super round. We were very pleased with that. This is the first year they've done an internship, and they were ecstatic with the results. I feel like that is an area that we will continue to move forward. For us, of course, just the opportunity to continue to support their growth, but then it also leads opportunities in very specific areas that are very focused to their business The opportunities and challenges, I think from the standpoint of what we are, we always are challenged with clear lines of communication. We want to make sure as, that we continue to expand the relationships and other faculty and other departments are being introduced, and those relationships are forged, that we're able to encapsulate that information and really aggregate it. So when I meet with them biannually, I can give them a list of what the key areas of engagement look like for us and provide that information back. So we are continuing to look for strategies in that way. We continue to review what companies are growing as far as opportunities and which ones are shrinking. Those are critical importance to us, that we're always maintaining relationships that have potential for both parties.
Thanks, Paula. And I think one of the things that comes clear as we do this is, there are going to be winners and losers as we do this. We can't be everything to everyone. One of the things we talk about oftentimes with our departments, if they say, "We want to offer a company first preference in selecting our graduates for that partnership," that's fine, but there can only be one person first. You can't name 10 companies as a preferred partner and say you all get first choice. So we have to strategically align ourselves with the best fits for what we do. I found these two quotes, these quotes are a few years old, but they were predictor, a precursor of what's going on in higher education with corporate America, and both of them reference the fact that the future success of 21st century economy is going to require closer relationships between the business community and the university than ever before, and the understanding that they are, have to rely on each other for their shared success. Y'all have any questions about what we're doing and how we're going about it? We appreciate your time.
Is this also the company that our former
Yes.
graduate Byron Smith
Byron? Was the CFO.
Yes, it is.
And first board member of Assurion?
Yes.
Okay.
And he was Mark Burns's roommate, by the way
Right.
in college.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to add that there are three companies that we are working with as we speak, and hopefully, very shortly at this board meeting next year, we will come with some results. I am particularly pleased and excited with the partnership we are developing with T-Mobile, and in fact, just this past November, the company was on campus and with, working with Bruce and the general, and provided Bruce and the General, and provided approximately, how many hotspots, Bruce, to veterans, all veterans, free of charge? Eleven hundred. 1,100. They have expressed great interest in partnering with MTSU as their major university that would provide educational degrees and certificates supported by T-Mobile. They have about X number, thousands of employees right in the Nashville area. Three thousand that they are interested in us working with. Also, just last week, the General and several others visited Delta. As you know, we have developed a program with our aviation program. They now want to expand that relationship with us with regards to veterans and providing degrees and certificate for them. And then, of course, we're working very closely with Amazon. So, the outcome is resources, degree program, certificate program, very much like what Arizona State has done with Starbucks. And so, hopefully, in the future, I will come to this Board and give you some of the results in that area. Paula and Joe, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the good work that you've done. Mr. Chairman, just a few wrap-up comments. I would like to inform the Board that the Chairman and I have been doing some outreach with our local state and state government officials. And in fact, we've met with several groups in the last month or so, including the most recent meeting. We hosted the new Speaker of the House, Speaker Sexton, on our campus last week and gave him a good overview of our university and some of the priorities we will have in the upcoming legislative session. I thought that went extremely well. We also had a meeting on campus with Congressman Dejelai and his staff. And then, we had a series of meetings with city council members, and I want to recognize a great supporter, and we had met with him, Councilman Smuthman. Would you stand? Let's thank you for your great support of our university. A great supporter. So, we just want to make sure that we keep in touch with these decision-makers and policymakers, keep them informed about what's going on in the university, what kind of issues and what kind of support we need. Finally, just a reminder, Saturday is graduation. We have two outstanding speakers, including a former student who is world-renowned, Chris Young, the Country Western. He's been very supportive of this university, not just in rhetoric, but financially. And also, we have the President of SACS, that will be, Dr. Whelan, will be our afternoon speaker. We will have about 1,700 students graduating. We're producing a lot of students for this area, and remember, this is a winter graduation. 1,700 students will be walking across the stage. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, I want to invite you, I hope you are making plans to join Liz and me on Thursday evening for our open holiday Christmas party where members of the community attend. It's been very successful over the years. It will be an opportunity for you to interact with members of this community and, and have an opportunity to socialize with them. And finally, I do want to thank each of you, personal note, for the cards and the prayers and thoughts and the passing of my mother. Trustee Freeman, I appreciate you taking the time to fly to Nassau last Saturday during the funeral. I want you all to know how much I appreciate your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Give any trustee an opportunity, if you have any remarks. If you don't, I would just echo the President on, we're reaching out to local, state, and federal so that we can inform the taxpayers' representatives of the great work you're doing and getting, hoping to get them to buy in on partnerships, frankly, from A to Z, all around the world. So, thank you very much. It's an honor to be your chairman. I appreciate everybody coming, and we are officially adjourned.